I'd like to welcome everybody to the White Town Free Comic Laboratory Trustee Meet in August 6, 2019. Please start off with a wall call, please.
You know, hello, library director.
Shannon Ferguson, trustee.
Daniel Purkerson, trustee.
Leah Hammond, trustee.
Catelyn Brown, assistant director.
Paul Lee, Reading Cafe.
Tim Tracy, trustee. Can we go to the secretary report and then we'll jump into...
Sure.
Secretary, what?
Tenos?
Change it. Miss Gates.
It was the first three-page reports, I really felt like, oh, dick.
Anybody have any comments, revisions?
Yes.
Can we now accept the secretary report? Can we jump out, uh, we can also, go ahead, move on about, uh, the routine right now for the director's report for new employee introductions.
Great, so we have, should I, you can find Sean? Okay, so we have two of our three hires here tonight, and welcoming Emily Levine, who is right here. And Emily, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and your building?
Yeah. Um, do you want to? Sorry, if you don't mind talking to your back. You're seeing us, you can see me, if you don't mind. Hi, Emily. I'm originally from Iowa, and I moved up to Boston to attend Simmons College, where I specialized in archives and archival management. I'm coming to you all from the public library, Brookline, I was there for about six months, and before then I was at the Boston Athenaeum for about three years. I kind of made the switch from academic libraries to public librarianship, because I felt like there's more opportunity to impact change in the community, working with public. And my primary interest lies in local history, so I'm really excited to kind of get into the archives here in the reading room, assess the collection, and see what we can do moving forward the next few years. Meeting with the historical society tomorrow, so it's very exciting. I live in Brookline, I have two cats, and right now I'm reading Survival Math by Mitchell Jackson.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Emily?
When did you start that?
I started about a week and a half ago. I felt very welcomed, I'm not shy at all, so I've just been like going around talking to people. And I think that's really helpful for patrons too, especially since I know Carrie was here for a while, so I try and, especially as someone comes up to the desk and asks for Berta or Steph, I usually make a point to introduce myself as well, since I'll be on Friday of the week. But yeah, it's been really, really great.
I thought you had a really succinct answer to my question, why and move?
From Iowa to Boston?
No, from the Athenea, the Athenea.
Oh, yeah, you know, so I, my background, going into school was in ecology, I was doing a lot of research, so when here we, I wound up in academic settings, doing research there, and I started at the Athenaeum as an unpaid intern, and they hired me on after my term was over. But, and I really loved my time and learned so much about archives and so much about doing in-depth research, but I really enjoy interacting with people in this capacity, you know, even though I'm not pouring over, you know, pages and pages of documents and doing in-depth bibliographic research, I think that there's much more potential and opportunity to impact every day change working within the public sector, especially for outreach and awareness for things like the local history collection, there's a beautiful reading room here, and I really look forward to doing programming outreach specifically with those materials. So, just a couple of days ago, I was going through, there's like a stack of backlog on my desk, and to fill it up, I was looking through some of the materials, and I found some letters which date back from the 18th century, talking about the Great Bridge Debate, about where to put the bridge over the Charles, and Walt Hamper and Lockitown, it was outstanding. And it's in this beautiful handwriting, I think it could be a great interactive display down the road, but there's just something to try to trove, so, yeah.
As things change, they stay the same.
Traffic. Is it Infrastructure Week?
Welcome.
Thank you. Hey guys, everyone, okay, thanks, Steph, and I'll be to your own floor, just a lot of time there.
And you didn't mention your sommelier.
Yeah, so I've been bartending for the past six years as a means of filling my time, because I was working part-time a lot in libraries, and I still on occasion am at a bar in the Southend that I've been at for a long time, it was certified song, so, yeah, awesome. Wine and cheese.
Thanks, Emily. And Yvonne, would you like to, you know, see, introduce yourself?
Hi, so I've been working for a while at the Hatch Mica Space, we do a lot of the pretty clean and basic things, so I'm sure you're on. And I've been learning machines one by one, and I think I've got a pretty good grasp on all from now, I have to fix them if they ever break, you know? So, I just graduated from a book buying school in the Norman, North Norman Street School, there's other departments too, it's all handcrafts, and I came to that from the rural island school of design where it's the lead illustration. And it all started because I love reading and spending time in libraries, and here I am back in the library. Yeah, I make books, fix books, sometimes write and print and buy them too.
And you made our 150th anniversary book.
Oh.
That's really cool.
Actually, I'm missing one.
Do we have any questions?
What kind of illustration are you doing?
Right now, I'm making a book about cats being books. I also have some cats.
That's really like niche, but I think it's gonna be big.
The other thing is a calendar of birds in Maine, so that's, that's niche.
Birds in Maine?
Yeah. I have a kind of a internship right now in Portland, Maine, at a print printing shop, where I do my homework and also my supervisor's work, it's a trade off.
Thank you both for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that speak to one?
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So we'll go to, yep, and no one said, I'll perform, we'll go to Reading Cafe.
All right, good evening, everyone. Not too much, but a couple of things, I wouldn't say, I'm just going over new menu items that I'm trying to create for the completion of the summer and fall items, hopefully I'll have that already up and ready by next week. Just passed the inspection again with the new, I guess, new port system that they have right now, the 2013 report that's all of the United States that they initiated. And I'll be going on vacation, as you guys are not aware, by the end of the month, or August 24th until Labor Day, one week vacation, which the cafe usually calls, and then come back just before the kids go back to school. Final thing, this is a, you know, hard to believe it's been 10 years, but it's been 10 years in September that I've been here. It's not quite a 150th anniversary, but 10 years is a long time to be in business, and 10 years is a long time to be in one business place. So I'm not sure what I'm gonna do, but I'm kind of planning on doing something for that celebration of that, my tenure here. So it's not gonna be quite as big as the 150, but I'm gonna try to do something on a lower scale.
You can make a cup of coffee for Susan Paul.
I could try it. But everything's been going remarkably well, and, you know, again, I'm pleased at the help that everybody else in this room has, at one point helped me, one for another, leading up to 10 years here, and I've had a pleasure of working with everybody here at one point, and it's been really a great tenure, so I look forward to completing everything, and I'm sure it goes off very well.
John, can I ask a question? As we transitioned to the new school year, and we had talked about some signage and stuff like that, as to a way to help you kind of corral some of the students who like to hang and whatnot, and, you know, take space for patrons, and, you know, it's for everyone down there. So I'm wondering if this is a good time for us to make sure that the appropriate signage is up and in place, so when they come back from school, they start on the 3rd or the 4th, right?
Right.
You would come back from vacation.
Right.
Okay? If these signs were up before here...
It would help.
It would help, it's a good transition piece, and then you could definitely say that, hey guys, you know, we've been here 10 years, this is, kind of, we gotta modify our rules a little bit.
Right.
Okay? And so just, I think it'd be good to have it in place.
Yeah, it'd definitely help before they, before they come back, so you have something in place, so you can be able to refer that to them.
Exactly.
In the event that, you know, something gets out of hand or something, so yeah, any little evidence.
Okay, so if you could, you know, work with the staff and make sure those things get up and around, so we can have it in place before, I guess, before you leave, or definitely before folks arrive.
Okay.
All right? Great.
And Meg, you could do it. I'm a recent graduate from RISD.
Oh. All right, we'll move on to that, next off. We'll move on to the library, is there anyone?
Sure. So, for the 2019 wrap-up in the FY20 budget, partners and Moonus, I was authorized last meeting to transfer, but there weren't any necessary, so the FY19 is pretty straightforward. Did anybody have any questions for the Moonus reporting?
Do we see any additional bills coming in for the current pay period?
Uh, we did roll over a few POs.
Okay.
But those are properly rolled over, so we'll just wrap those up as the museum voices come in.
So I guess what I was thinking, we're looking at 97% use, we think we're gonna get to like 98, 99?
No, because the incumbents are already in there, because this is where we're at, 97.
Okay, so, okay. They would cover it back on the electricity?
Yes. Yes, electricity, go back to the bottom line with ASCO project.
Right.
Yep.
Was that, that those movements, was that the transfer, I guess, of the 13,000, or was it gonna be the $2,500 amounts?
The 13,000.
The 13,000, so it goes back to town right away.
And the 9,500.
So is that, that, okay, fair enough.
Any questions on the FY20? Early days.
Early days.
Yeah.
Spend wisely, ladies. That's not, that's not how it would be left, is it? That tree came into fruition.
Don't give Caitlin free rein.
How would we, are you talking about, you're on paper, right?
I'm sure they're all watching.
Oh, yeah.
And we have the fourth quarter budget breakdowns included. I had a question, I was just looking, quick look at the building renovations under J.C. Kennestra, I know that this one is usually the highest amount, is that like a typical repair work for? Absolutely. Yeah. That's why we're looking for a new HVAC system. There's always lots to repair. Yeah, yeah. This year we had to replace the expansion tank on the boiler, and so on and so forth, yeah.
But do we have good news on that, on HVAC, you know, the next three years?
Um, we'll have to wait and see where it goes in the plan, because they slot it in, but they don't attach necessary funding to it. If it's TBD, then that's not necessarily good news, but we have to make mention of it when we go before that again.
Okay. Just, my apogee is?
That's our upsource by IT company. That's still working well? Yeah, that's going fine. Any other questions for the quarterly breakdowns?
Why is, they just need another standard report here. So we had Billy Meggs and Billy Proofs, and so we had HVAC, both in improvements, renovations, and building maintenance.
Right.
So we had significant, 37, $30,000 worth of repairs.
Yep.
That alone should take any TBD...
Right.
Away from, and into a, let's do it.
I agree, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The Bibliotek?
Yes, that's our RFID company. Where are you, which is specifically, are you looking at?
Uh, just looking at the computer name, it's a, the, under...
Yep. Annual contract, yeah, that's, it's a lot of money, but they're the only game in town.
Caught my hat, it's me.
Oh, okay.
But then I look over the money, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, nothing really, I mean, there are, they do the RFID tags on all the equipment associated with it, security gates and so on. First, the report, the, um, the grant reports. Yeah, on the FY20 funded grant report, there's no dollar figure for the Pratt, because they're still trying to figure out the Nancy's password to get into that account.
Yes, I mean...
Nancy not gonna know that.
That's correct, okay.
So, I'm not sure when that's gonna actually appear, but hopefully soon.
But know that the money is ours.
Yes. And hopefully, I mean, we're, we can spend 80% of that interest on periodicals, so I'm hoping that we'll have that number soon, and then we can go through the process of the Pratt Fund getting that money freed up, so that we can use it.
Yeah, that's, that's the ripple effect of the loss, that also, you know, a special piece of it is stuff you don't realize, it's just not this particular, it's, it's, it's like a Taliban, you know, wet signatures versus dry signatures, it caused a lot of havoc, you know? But it's small in comparison to the loss of talent received. Okay.
And if there's any more questions, comments?
So we have 14 in, I don't know if you can spend it?
Yes.
What's the research into that?
Uh, nothing.
So, paycheck.
Comes down.
Lots of ice in our hands.
Who knows, the patch?
I'm hoping we're all here, let's see other questions. I changed the format of the financials to match the Moonus report.
Okay.
So it might be easier for you to understand.
And did I sign a grant application today for, was that just a report?
No, that's just a report for the library.
I mean, we will get money eventually from it for the, the lignite, that's where it comes from.
Right, okay.
It's not an application per se.
Okay. So we have just four, well, I said, this is 13, thank you, we have 16 in the total we spent on stuff, okay. All right, any questions on the financial report? So we make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the financial report?
So, motion's made, second on favor. Aye, the ayes have it, okay. Chairman's report, I just wanted to welcome Maradon, Don, right?
Yes.
Our new trustee coming in, once the ballots are all finalized and signed, so there's three spaces and one of the three, so welcome aboard, you should fight, Mar, come by and look at, see how we conduct our business a little bit, and get a feel for it, we have these on the first Tuesday for everyone here or now, so feel free to swing by, have a cup of coffee, and, you know, what should we do?
I will.
All right? Sometimes we have laughs, sometimes, no, but more often than not, we have laughs. Well, again, welcome, foremost.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Director's report.
Okay, so we did the employee introductions, my name's Sean, parental leaves, Caitlin's gonna talk a little bit about that.
So, Ellen Miranda is about halfway through her parental leave, she's the supervisor of children's services, she'll be back in October, I've been supervising the two libraries in there while she's been out, things are going well, but we're looking forward to having her back in October. And Liz Helfer, who is the Hatch Coordinator, she'll be on maternity leave mid-September through early January. We're getting a plan in place to make sure everything's covered, we're training up a few new people to make sure that we can maintain our posted hours, Yvonne, as well as work extra hours, so I think we'll, we'll be in pretty good shape for that leave, and we're looking, we're happy for Liz, and we'll be looking forward to having her back in January.
So, when, you said we're looking to train some folks, paid staff?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I was thinking more about liability issues.
Yeah, no, well, we have, we do have volunteers that are on the space, mostly evenings, but we don't, we have fewer volunteers available in the afternoon, so that's the, those are the hours we're looking for, to make sure that we can consistently be open, and I have a few people on staff that have expressed interest, so, yeah, so we'll probably be training them up and getting them ready to come.
Awesome. What is the library's maternity leave policy? I mean, is the state?
So it's three months per contract, and then they can extend it with FMLA leave, so up to six months.
I don't know what the state is. And then, should their spouse be an employee, they can take the carrier leave, and that's three months without paying, and then you can, that's what I did for all my kids, and I supplemented it with sick time, so I went three weeks unpaid to a week sick, three weeks unpaid to a week paid, so those, there's opportunities, and most important time I like, that's going with my kids, were those first six months of their lives, so we'll get that.
Okay, we call the fund, and I'm gonna have Caitlin talk about that one too.
So, I'm coming back to you, picking up where Emily left off, I'm looking for some more money to keep on with the 1,000 book department we are in program, the amount that I requested is in the memo, and it's something $8,000.
It doesn't go?
Yeah, eight, up to $8,446.60, it might be a little bit lower depending on how many bags we get, but in that range. I outlined kind of where we've gone with that since we started, it's been very popular, I think that this would get us for at least another year, probably more, because I think we'll hit that critical mass at some point, we won't have as many people taking them, so hopefully I'll get to come back to you for a while, but this is...
So, what I was just saying, I'm just talking, go ahead, the introductions, it's money, it's money, it's a fantastic program, yeah, and when you say sometimes you're hitting the critical mass, I mean, we're always gonna have...
I think you'll always have new, you'll always have new people coming, but we're right now, since the beginning, we have all the high and unders, you know?
Oh, I had to say that, okay.
So at some point, it'll, I think it'll appear a little bit, but there are always being people moving in, and I just don't know if it will be as, you know, as intense. At some point, I think it'll, it'll trickle a little bit down, but...
And we may have some bags coming back from all the run assistants, and that'll be very, very nice. Okay, so, do we have to make a?
Yeah, we need a vote on that one.
Okay, so, would someone make a motion on this?
Motion to transfer to $8,436.60, just like 1,000 books people can be back in the program.
Second, motion's made, and second, the usual call funds for two, $8,446.60 for the 1,000 books we're taking out of program, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, the ayes have it, thank you.
Okay, and Sean is now here, so, thanks for coming. Sean is our new IT person, can you talk a little bit about what you do, and how long you've been here, and where you, or what your history is with IT?
My name's Sean, I've been here two months, and deal with all the computer stuff, the military house more, okay? I do my best.
And doing a great job so far, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So you were applying before?
Yeah, I was, I was brought up before as a librarian assistant, and helping to get access to a library, to get the information they want. Before that, I was in military for four years, and, yes?
Anybody have any questions for Sean? He's working closely with Apogee right now on some new computers that we just deployed for the staff in public, and that's, that's been fun, I'm sure, and a learning experience as well, but, yeah.
But I gathered, I mean, I gather the military experience was very technical, I mean, you were doing IT pretty much full-time, I gather?
Yes.
And moving into libraries, from what I read, you're, you're doing IT, but you're also dealing with people, you're acting as a librarian also, or you were, or calling?
And, through the book life, I was a librarian assistant, it's not, assistant. Welcome, enjoy.
Good day, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our room next to your brother. Again, this is Caitlin asking for it.
So, I outlined what I'm looking for here, so we are interested in doing, well, we are planning on doing the Myers Briggs Assessment with all staff, we're already committed to doing the assessment of the whole staff, as well as a smaller breakdowns, so that's moving forward that, but I really, I really would like to see us be able to provide individual one-to-one breakdowns for the libraries, to really help people contextualize what it is, why it's useful, and how they can use it to, you know, for interpersonal communication with, you know, within the staff, and also with patrons, but I didn't want to blow the whole, the whole staff development budget on it, because we have $10,000 dedicated to staff development for the year, and so essentially take it all, so I'm asking for that individual portion, which is about $5,100, to come from lignite, so we can still provide conference workshop attendance, and another all-staff training that I'd like to see happen probably early next year.
And what would you think, is this gonna happen in June?
This, the Myers Briggs, I would like to get done, like, fall-ish, and then we're exploring having some sort of all-staff, well, broken down into groups, but we want to do like an active bystander training to help people understand how... to help people understand how to cope with different difficult scenarios like racism, homophobia, things like that. And the place that we found is anywhere from two to four thousand dollars, so I really, it's an important topic I think that we need to address, so.
You've done something like this before.
The Myers Briggs?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, either nine years ago, yeah.
What did you finally, I mean, I understand what Myers Briggs is used individually, you know, this, but you're doing it here and you're enabling people to sort of say, okay. You're more internalized, you're more overt, you're getting together, you can both talk, or?
So, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot about communication style. So I know, I can figure out what, how Caitlin best hears things, she can figure out how I best hear things, so we can move forward together and not have, you know, breakdown in communication. And do that for the whole staff, then that helps us all to work better together.
So the last time you did it, you had the small group breakdowns, did you, was it by the department like the reference, or was it?
No, it was, because I was still at children's library and that, and it was, I think we just split it into two, two halves based on like schedules probably. And it was fine, but I don't, I don't think we really took away the real benefit and understanding, it's not just about what is my type, it's about understanding that other people have different strengths and weaknesses, that they're drawn to different ways to communicate. And using those, especially with people that work very closely in those, to go, to bring their communication further, so.
So the population of staff that we had eight years ago?
Is different.
Is much different, so this is gonna be a good, new, new tool for folks, okay. Do we provide that, would they like advanced prep, like reading or articles about?
Well, they, we, I probably will do something like that, but they also, that's what the debrief is really about, and also the, the report that they get is very detailed. But yeah, I would probably provide some sort of, some, something to contact, contact. And we're, I mean, to be very clear, this is a tool among other things, but we think that this is a, a good one for us and it's something that is common enough that people can understand it and.
So do we have, is there also, is there local firm that comes in and does all the facilitation and all that stuff? Awesome. Would we do it in-house?
Yeah.
And so the additional cost would mostly cover the one-on-one debriefings after? And that, except for you could still have the small group breakdowns and discuss it with each other, okay.
But does individual breakdowns come with like a packet that explains how you or specific staff interacts with other people?
Everyone, everyone gets the report and I think there's different, there are different levels of reporting, yeah, this one is a pretty detailed one, so it will hit, based on what I remember, it will, it goes over in detail, you know, your own profile, but I think it also gives you strategies, but, and I think that the.
That's cool.
And I think, I like the fact that the, that there's a third party kind of going over the findings there, that, you know, what, what your profile's like and, and, you know, this is, you know, okay, this is, this is the way in. Okay, it's good, it's bad, I'll figure it out, let's, let's work on things and let's, can you excel on other things, that's good, I like that.
And this is for the whole staff, hard time, hard to have everybody's.
Does it?
The whole permanent staff.
The whole permanent staff, right. Right.
It's all private, federal staff, it's not my clerical. I mean, I'm clean staff or that, general staff.
No.
All right. So, so make a motion to do the fifty-one hundred, sorry, just a fifty order.
Move to, move the fifty-one hundred from Link-Meg to cover the Myers-Briggs indicator to individual assessment.
So a motion made to, to use fifty-one hundred for the Link-Meg to provide the individual one-on-one and TI consultants. You have a second? Second's made on favor. Aye, the ayes have it.
Great, thank you. Now on to my various updates, which are many. And again, starting with Caitlin on the five K.
So things are going pretty well, Jamie has taken on organizing and running five K this year. One is a student's job, but also I'm on leave now. So things are going pretty well and standard to how they're going in the past. We are trying to get some support from local businesses, including Crusoes. We reached out to the Bellman Savings Bank, which is now People's United Bank for a small donation to help provide the water for the event. We're also gonna be working with Marathon Sports who will help us, you know, if we do a couple things for them, they'll do some stuff for us, so we'll be handing out, we'll have a bid pickup in the quarter square, they'll, they'll put out their, our, they'll put it out to their social media and email network, so I'm hoping, you know, we don't wanna get hundreds of more people, but we would like to, you know, if we could get a few more people to make a little bit more money, that would be great. He's gone to the licensing board and got approval, we're kinda getting staff here for the day, so we're going smoothly so far.
And DPW's gonna put the cones out and all that stuff for us.
Do you need police detail on that?
Yes. Two hundred and twelve dollars. Not that I remember the number.
I read a books, Moonfire in Harvard Square, I think our police detail was twenty-two hundred dollars.
Okay, so next, the July seventeenth storm, which was pretty major. Short-lived, but really, really coming down. We had the backup in the main drain and it came up in the bathrooms and the server room and we had some minor damage, mostly carpet stains and so on and so forth. Luckily, subsequent storms, we have not had any of those and a backup again. DPW did respond on the day and we also alerted Lori Cable, the director of public buildings, that this happened, so everyone's in the know that we did have that issue, but apparently a lot of other buildings also had the same thing. Next is maintenance transition, so I just mentioned Lori Cable, new director of public building, she's been in our position about a year. She's been over this, the time that she's been with the town, she's been building up her resources and staff. She's now ready to take over oversight of building maintenance here and custodian supervision. She's already taken over town hall, senior center, do you know if she's taken over other buildings yet or no? So we're gonna be meeting with her, her supervisor custodians and Ed Lewis on August twenty-one to begin the transition. She also indicated that we'll start talking about FY21 capital needs, so that's upcoming. Caitlin and I are gonna have all of our ducks in a row before August twenty-one to make sure that we're all on the same page about what's gonna happen in this new scenario, so we will keep you updated as we, as we go along with that.
Does this take work off of your plates?
It takes a hell of a lot of work off Caitlin's plate and mine too, so hopefully, hopefully it will, it will take a lot of work off her plates, so looking forward to it.
The only thing I would recommend or, you know, we have by having our custodial staff under our tutelage, we have expectations that we can make sure that we communicate effectively to folks. And I would just wanna make sure that our expectations are communicated effectively and appropriately to the Tulare and Hur staff who are gonna be really, you know, overseeing this, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly is forefront of our minds at this point and we will do our best to make sure that everyone is on the same page.
Right.
Custodians, Hur staff, Lori, Caitlin, myself, about who supervises what, who reports to who, you know, how things get reported, how things get resolved. So yes, we're absolutely thinking about that a lot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Town grid for two charging stations, I spoke with Ed Lewis, he's applying for this grant. If the town gets the grant, two of the spaces in our lot will have charging capabilities. He did say that if they aren't occupied, the electric char, cars, that other vehicles could use those spots, but I will let you know how that progresses. That's all I know at this point.
Okay. And just the grant would have the money for the protest signs and all that stuff, I don't know, but that's, that's something that you could ask yet to make sure it'll be great.
Door project, I was hoping to have more of an update. The contractor has been asked to set a pre-construction meeting, but he doesn't, has not yet shared a date, if he has one, of when the doors will be delivered. So I will update you via email as I learn anything about that, because as you know, it was scheduled to start this month. Farmer's market is going well and just reminder that we have a move monthly and our next time is next Wednesday. Collaboration with the fire department, I sent you some photos earlier today and Caitlin's gonna talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so the fire department, which I had a couple months ago, wanting to do some collaboration, so we invited, it's Jeff, I don't know.
Pooters.
If that's how you pronounce it. He, so he came and he was a special guest at Storytime yesterday and the kids loved him and the librarians loved him, he did a great job. He just did kind of like a show and tell. The goal here for them is kind of to, to make kids not scared or fired of the fire, the gear and all that, so he dressed up to make sure that people, you know, the kids saw him as a funny face. And we are also going to plan something for October during five safety month. They have a whole curriculum that they do for kids from pre-K up through like adulthood, so we're, you know, looking at that and we'll do something sort of similar, but more geared on the fire safety side of things, but it will be in collaboration with the librarians. And we're going to hopefully push that out, anyone will be invited, but we also wanna kind of focus on homeschoolers, because a lot of the stuff they also get in school, so we wanna make sure that homeschoolers are aware of the opportunity to participate.
Out of curiosity, how many homeschool families?
I don't, I don't know, I, I could get, come through the library?
Yeah, I guess not all of them are.
We, I mean, we, I know Hatch has had like collaboration with some homeschool networks, I don't, I don't know if I'd be able to tell you that information.
Don't chase it down, I was just being a total.
Next is IT study. According to our latest schedule, the study will be complete by September thirteen. It was my understanding at the beginning of the study that our, our library physical IT infrastructure will be assessed part of the project, but according to the schedule that I have, all of that work's been completed. I did email the supervisor of the department to find out more about that, but I haven't got a response back yet, so we need to hear about that. And then just one more thing on the agenda, collective bargaining. Happy to announce that the town and library came to an agreement on a memorandum of agreement for success or collective bargaining agreement. Right now, it's in the hands of the union, they need to schedule a ratification vote, but I'm hopeful that that's gonna be wrapped up this month.
Good.
That's it for me.
Okay. Old business library work evaluation, we're still waiting for one more response from
Two.
Two, excuse me, two responses, okay, so we'll table that evaluation, these are important to get to Leon so we can do a kind of full circle on this and have Leon respond, have a response, so we have a full package and we can sign off on it. I know that one of the papers is gonna hopefully come in by the end of the week to you, okay? And then let's shoot for the next meeting to have this kind of wrap up, so we can go ahead and begin to move on and go to the, the next part of our business, okay? New business? How old request for information, Shet, do you have anything? Danielle?
Nothing for me.
Good. Date of our next meeting? Oh, sorry, is it, could I? Could, you can, you, Teddy's, Ted. Yes, I can, so I can just extend invitation on to, to come to our next couple meetings. You can send that to me.
Sure.
I'm ashamed if I have a third guy, but I don't know.
He's always in Spain. So our, our next meeting, what could be and should be on, on September third. That's the first day, that's the first day of the school labor day. Is that where, that's supposed to be, I'm more concerned.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem.
All right, so it's September third. All right, have a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second, all ayes. All ayes, we all have it, great, thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the summer, moving by really fast.